I got it.
Hey, you made any progress? Did they get you this stuff?
Diane Ives just lost me in my sleep. Thursday of last week, but I don't know where I'm going to send this.
Oh, they never came back from Chicago.
For second use the job. We're both for years. Yeah. So, yeah. So, she'll give me some information.
Okay. Why are they paying so much? Is it you Kathy? We save it in energy. Let them sleep. We're working with all the board. Hey.
Okay. Get another employee out of our company. We have a friend who opened up a bar and he hired somebody from the Cone Road.
Oh, really?
He wants a second one. He needs more. So, I said, "Who? I don't want to make pressure on anybody thinking that a board member's asking for..." So, how do I steer him? But hey, if they want to hire, we're producing a product that somebody wants to hire.
Good. I'm glad to hear it. Yeah. Keep it coming. More people get jobs.
Kathy, what are you... Are you waiting for the rest of the...
I am waiting for the rest of the board to...
No, Sign.
Sign is the only one that isn't here. Everyone else is.
Everyone's at the policy meeting, so we're signed.
Well, no. Mike just asked me if I would be...
Secretary. Oh, so Sign's not sure.
Will you be secretary?
No, I said hello.
Hi.
You're gonna do it next year if you get re-elected.
Yeah, I know, but that means in November I'll start paying attention to what happens at these things.
Turn me microphone.
You mean there's people out there now that...
Another check mark for our vote. Huh? You're allergic to something? K- fever.
Well, it kinda is.
You see eyedrops.
I do one of them every morning.
They probably wear off. Or you're allergic to something inside the building.
Something that might have arrived a few months ago. Some new allergy.
Something.
He's not listening.
He's already busted her desk up a... How many times now?
Or he's learning about this.
Broke this evening.
Again? He broke something?
I broke that little glass thing this evening again.
Oh, the same one? Take it off your desk, dear.
Well, I'm just not allowed to be around the corner. I was trying to help. Kristi Thorpe.
Oh, it was another one of those where he has to... It's your boyish enthusiasm. He's like a gangly teenager. I don't want to say anything, but... Didn't you just read the thing? We're not allowed to talk about ageism and that kind of... It's against our...
Wait, is that against our policy? Is that policy against us?
Yeah. We're it. We're the board. You can go home. You can go home now. Yeah. And I'm gonna tell you, you're not allowed to publish that picture in public because he's wearing his old...
Oh, yeah.
I threw it away. I threw away that. I said, "That's very weird." My husband wears his work t-shirts. So, he wears his work that are ready, but this one had a...
Yeah, it sounds like calendar.
Yeah, that's plain.
Yeah, did I not accept? Okay. Because I usually get two to one. We like what's happening together is like the accepting part, right?
We want to hire another... Well, Joe wants to hire another. The cook is from Henry Ford College, so he wants to hire a second.
Where is he?
Joe Plunkett. It's called JP's. It's an ab drive and column.
Okay. They're renovating. They opened up these these things.
No.
So, they got rid of...
Well, I know.
We're at the tavern.
Yeah.
Was that the old tavern?
The old tavern. Yeah.
So, the oak, it's really nice wood. Like actually usually have...
When I'm over, you got those tables still.
Well, the tables are in the back, so you...
Yeah. He's trying to make it for sports bar.
He decided to...
And the back.
And the reason is because David Jacob.
Yeah. Did he just leave?
Oh, yeah.
He's going to California.
So, you took me... You went to a bar and then you started having...
A beer.
Well, this is right.
Well, no, I had it. It was later. It was two days before. Saturday. Even though I went to a...
Which one? That ACC?
Yeah, you had some... Is there a table?
Did we share it?
Yeah.
Usually they... It's one table.
Sam. Is it your call? Yes.
What? I'm so glad I don't golf.
I told Susan.
I have a perfect excuse to not.
You've got to prioritize.
Yeah. I will put a roll out. So, I'll be there apparently.
Now, you get to play the role of...
Did you make it through two holes in the chamber, honey?
I didn't make it. I didn't. I showed up at Champaign and did not play. This one I played.
It's like you're running for election. Michael, we're up here.
You're gonna try.
You're this side.
Oh, you're gonna be the one standing right there.
Shannon's behind.
We've got lots of pictures of Brian. I think Michael golfed in more than...
Chelsea sent me something asking... Oh, no, asking about sponsorship.
He's not a golfer.
But I... I have Shannon. I think she called her Saturday to find... Last year. Did you go golfing last year?
Yes.
So, I came for a game. But I actually left early. I guess she's... This time I'm gonna have to do the first because I'm going to go.
Yeah. You know, you gotta...
Susan said that.
Did he? Yeah. Did he have...
Last year I tried to get a foursome. People, of course, are backing out. And then they were trying to say, "Well, I still pay." They didn't play while I paid. So, I'm not trying to get a foursome today.
Well, I think Michael ended up doing one year when Brian... Brian was still...
She's got me in there somewhere. She thinks she does. She got the date blocked off.
I think Tom talked to you.
Well, Mike and I are golfing tonight and dying for the college along with you and John. I think that's what I saw.
Yeah.
And because that one leads into our board meeting.
We're starting.
I think it's the 14th.
Oh, is that right?
That's a Sunday. It's on a Sunday.
No, the chambers... The Chamber of Commerce is, yeah, like the... That's just designed to be that. Well, I always have to cut off early from the mayor's telephone to a college board meeting. I think I played 16 moves this year. With... I think I was playing that, moving that out. Oh, here they come.
Hey. No, she's... No, she's just making a face for coming late.
Oh, sorry. It was all policy discussion.
I'm not sure she's been careful what she said there.
Don't have much to say tonight. Boy, that late night.
Faster and funny.
So, you're saying all three of the kids are in school.
Y'all notice me. I speak up no matter what. I just put my foot in my mouth and then I have to make apologies afterwards. What can I say? Seriousness of everything all the time.
Are we ready?
I'm ready.
Do you have a...
Are you ready? You too? Everybody?
Do we have a sec... Who's playing? Is Farwaah, are you playing secretary?
Yep.
She is playing secretary.
Good evening, everybody. Let's call this meeting to order of the Henry Ford College Board of Trustees for September 17th, 2018 at 7:12. First item, please.
All right. Call to order and roll call. Hussein Barry.
He is absent.
He is absent. Farwaah Hamud here. Trustee Lane.
Here.
Trustee Nasser.
Here.
Trustee Petlicov.
Here.
Trustee Thor.
Here.
And chairmate.
Here. Next item, please.
Approval of minutes. Recommended action. Move to approve the minutes of the following board of trustees meetings. August 13th, 2018. On August 13th, 2018, there were two. One was regular, one was a closed session. On September 10th, 2018, special meeting. And September 10th, 2018, closed session.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. All... Any discussion? All those in favor of the minutes, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Unanimous? Next item, please.
Recognition and acknowledgements. I believe we have one of our students here today. That's Emily Schroder. If she can come up.
Good evening, Emily.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay. Sorry if I butcher your name. Thank you, President Cavalcuna, chairmate and members of the board. My name's Emily Schroder. I'm a graduate of Davis High School and now a HFC sophomore majoring in occupational therapy. I chose to attend HFC so that I could participate in the honors program and play the sport I love, volleyball. I'm an outside hitter and defensive specialist on the team. Last year I earned NJCAA second-team All-American and was also named to the Academic All-MCCA-A team. I'm a second semester Hawk Academic Team member as well and, of course, striving to earn these honors again this year. I plan to complete my associates at Henry Ford and transfer to U of M Ann Arbor or Grand Valley State University to continue my studies in occupational therapy next year. Now, I am pleased to read this month's HFC board acknowledgements. The Joint Commission on Allied Health Personnel and Ophthalmology Education and Research Foundation awarded generous scholarships to 13 technician students to assist with the cost to acquire certification. Total amount awarded was $2,350. We are very proud of our OPT students' accomplishments. Thank you for all of your continued support. Welcome back days take place from September 17th to the 22nd. New and returning students can learn about the available programs and services on campus, join clubs, participate in activities, speak with students and support staff, and involve in campus life at HFC and the community. On August 29th, Rochelle Taylor, athletic director, was chosen to be the featured guest in the long-hour podcast at Chat in the Garden, which highlights women making a positive impact in the field of athletics and administration. Many thanks to Ms. Taylor for being a positive role model for our students' athletes. On September 7th, the Student Services Training Committee held their first training session. The kickoff event included all the students affairs and student services was highlighted by Dr. Michael Nielsen at the guest speaker. Further training modules are planned for the entire fall semester and will include topics such as customer service and campus safety. On September 14th, a celebratory event was held for the enrollment service teams. Hunger's Heroes, who donated 4,690 food items for the April 2018 Great Snack Pack Attack Food Drive. The food drive was a huge success with 13 teams participating from across the campus and total of 17,694 food items being donated to HFC's food pantry, The Ox Nest. A big thank you to Holly Diamond, Mandy Earl, Trey Gibson, and Elizabeth Preston for all your hard work on this event. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations on your sterling career. Keep going.
And all those wins.
Next item, please.
All right. President's items. President Cavalcuna.
Thank you, Madam Interim Secretary.
Yes. You are welcome.
And thank you, Mr. Chairman. You have a packet in front of you that has several items. They are the cash forecast as of last week. They are the HFC budgeted enrollment compared to actual enrollment. And they are... They include the Human Resources Search Committee summary. Before I go into those documents, I wanted to take the opportunity to acknowledge two pretty important groups of people. Those who are bidding us adieu as retirees after what I would describe as distinguished public service. And then some of your new colleagues here at the college who are starting their, what I hope to be distinguished, decades of public service here at Henry Ford College. So, to start with, I doubt that any of you here on this dais would be surprised if I didn't take one more opportunity to acknowledge Becky Chadwick. She is retiring after 17 and a half years of service here at the college. We did hold a presentation actually in this room, and I know how touched and pleased she was that several of you made that occasion. And it was bittersweet for all of us. You know that she was the Vice President of Strategy and Information and gave tireless service that almost made it two decades. So, she is one that I think is worth acknowledging one more time. Another retiree that is worth acknowledging is, and frankly, they're all worth acknowledging. I write each of these people a note thanking them for their service. And I invite them to make comments to you all if they wish. That is Denise Schulte. I hear a couple chuckles and I have to tell...
44.5 years?
Forty... 44.5 years.
Is she here?
She was born... She was born here.
And you're only 12 now, right?
Yeah. So, I have it on good authority that your trusted colleague and support person, Kathy Dimitriou, was... Were you a single lady when you first started working with?
I was.
Yes. Which is saying a lot for the years of distinguished service that Ms. Schulte provided as an academic affairs assistant in the School of Science, Technology, Engineering, and Mathematics, which probably in the 44.5 years, Dr. Nealon had probably seven or eight different names at school. We probably could have listed several different names at that school. But I do want, as the spokesman for you all of the college, I do want it to be publicly stated that we are in debt to those two fine women and their public service. Which is a nice segue to a couple new employees and one transitioning employee. When I say transitioning, and I'm kind of... I'm probably gonna catch her by surprise by doing this, but in your human resources packet, the first item is who we have selected to take Becky Chadwick's position.
Now, remember, this is... We haven't voted on this yet.
And I'm urging you to vote positively on this. And I'll just note that the reason I did that in a little bit of a different than standard process was because of how important it was that this person take this position and begin work in support of Becky Chadwick until you all had a chance to look at this. And in this position of interim Vice President of Institutional Research Planning and Accreditation, you have someone here who served for six years with duty and integrity and now is ascending to the level of Vice President and doing a fantastic job earning her peers' respect and trust. She's, I think, a good message to people like Ms. Schroder, who just spoke to you, that this institution is excited about and respectful of ambitious, intelligent, goal-driven people who just happen to be a female. And we are proud of female leaders, and I think this next person will be one of our female leaders. And frankly, irrespective of her gender, but it's worth mentioning. That's Dr. Lori Gonko. She's here. And I'm glad to have her. I think you may have met her. Go ahead and stand up, Lori. And then, Daria Jackson, are you here? I think I saw you in the back. Daria Jackson is going to be a Special Assistant to the Vice President of Human Resources and Campus Safety. She has an associate's degree from some other community colleges. It's actually a fine institution there in Oakland County. And we're excited to have her there. And before you do, put your hands together. We have Rico Spencer. She's right in front of Ms. Jackson. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. He's right in front of Ms. Jackson.
And we'll get your glasses next.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Spencer is going to take the role of the Student Success Coach in the Student Affairs Department. And I should note that this is a position that is grant-funded through the Detroit Promise. And as you all know, that is something we're proud of. We have the most Detroit Promise students of any institution. And Mr. Spencer will be helping us in that regard. So, to the both of you, we hope you enjoy your time here at Henry Ford College. We're proud to call you colleagues. And if you do have time, if you ever see these board members, please introduce yourself. Say hello. They care about learning about you and your passions and your jobs, and I invite you to tell them those things. So, welcome. Thank you for being here. Mr. Chairman, the next thing I want to talk to you about is what I am beginning to call the chart of rainbow money. There was a hearty chuckle from the first row, and that was from John Satkowski.
This is his rainbow money.
I think I'll probably just call Mr. Satkowski President Emeritus. And you know that this document was something that he had a large hand in producing that was a way that you all could see where our cash balance was throughout the year. And we learned that this was important through some tough years. I certainly don't expect you to study this like a religious text. However, I would point out to you that this is the hard work that Mr. Satkowski and his team put together. In the last page, the bottom right is the take-home message. Remember that this document describes and anticipates where our cash balance will be for every single day of the fiscal year. And when times are bad, and particularly in this institution's history, that cash balance has been pretty close to terrible. But if you look over 2013 until today, the low point in any given year, which is what the bottom right-hand side of this page shows, the low point is in the healthy margins. And another ancillary benefit of this document is that it shows we are fiscally sound and we are also using any cash that we have above what is necessary to operate the college to invest. And if you ever want a detailed analysis, I'm happy to do about a half of that and then ask Mr. Satkowski to answer the rest of the questions. But this is important to report to you all, particularly with this institution's history. Any questions on that? The rainbow chart of cash?
Does the cash forecast for June 30th, 2019, being less than June 30th, 2018, is that because of an anticipated lower enrollment? Projected that way?
Yes.
Is that still at the 3% anticipated even though we're seeing something different right now?
So, Mr. Satkowski and I have had that discussion many times, but as recently as this morning. And that's the next piece of paper I have for you. Here's this chart.
But I want to know what these numbers are reflecting.
These four numbers reflect a 2% reduction.
2% reduction.
So, Trustee Pellicov, if you look at the last document I've got here, that'll answer several of the questions that I think are follow-ons to that document. And it answers the question that you had asked. One thing I've reported to each of you individually and needs to be reported collectively is that enrollment at our institution is down. And of course, we forecasted that it would be down. And I want to walk through what this document tells you. So, let's start with the far-left-hand column. FY 2019 is where we are now. That's... We're in the first... Getting close to the second quarter of the fiscal year. And we budgeted, which is what you just asked, Trustee Pellicov. We budgeted that enrollment would be down for the entire fiscal year by 2%. And in the fall, we have realized, at least until... Was this Friday, Mr. Satkowski?
Yes.
Friday, fall's enrollment was down by 5.16%. And what we can look at is in the past years, those same two numbers. What the college budgeted versus what the college realized as the fall enrollment as compared to the year before. So, you can see that since 2014, and I would relate to you that that is... You can see a trend downward for fall enrollment. However, I think the answer to that cause would be that the economy in the United States, but particularly in Michigan, was increasing for those years. And we budgeted three in 2014, 5% reduction in 2016, 3% reduction in 2017, and then two in the last two fiscal years, if you include the year we're in now. One of the things I was interested in, and I thought if I were a trustee, I'd be interested in, is, okay, what kind of information can we glean from the last years about what fall tells us to expect in winter? And that's the next column to the right. When each of those years, we budgeted in winter, those three, five, three, two, and two going down that column, you can see what we actually realized. So, just looking at 2014, and we experienced in the fall, almost flat enrollment. And then the winter, we experienced negative or a 2.75 reduction. Trustee Thorpe may be able to tell me from his expertise on this, but that's probably where the economy started to really rise. And of course, being countercyclical here, that's probably when you could mark us as enrollment to begin to go down. Because then that following fall of 16, you have a 6.3, 8% reduction in enrollment. And then the winter, it actually... The enrollment got worse, down to 8.78%. Moving down to fiscal year, 17, 3% reduction in fall, which was... Which led to a 1.93% in winter. And then last year, we had some leveling off because we were only down 0.76% enrollment. And then the winter was 1.49. So, I can't tell you that there's a strong historical correlation to answer the question of what can we expect for this fall... I'm sorry, this winter. Just in this small data set, you can see that it generally tends to be... The enrollment reduction generally tends to be worse in winter. But of course, there is one year where it was less of a reduction. The bottom half of this document shows what... The bottom half of this document shows what we're gonna look like at the end of the year. And we're in fiscal year 2019. And if we were to only lose 2% across the whole year, bear in mind, right now, we're at down 5.16%. So, well, we... I'm hopeful that we can rebound in winter. I can't tell you that that's likely. But if we were to be able to maintain an aggregate of 2% reduction, then our end of the year, we'd have a surplus of 1.5 million. If we continued at the 5% reduction, you can see there that it's very, very slight, but still not in the red at the end of the fiscal year with $14,000. The next columns are 2020, 2021, and 2022, with what would happen if we experienced a 2% enrollment decline versus a 5% enrollment decline. And you can see that 2021 is where we would have an issue. There are some factors that have been held constant here, which I'm sure you're going to ask me now. But I think this is to show you that we're looking at the enrollment issue. And then after I answer your questions, I do want to segue to the more important thing, which is, well, what are you gonna do about it? But go ahead with your question, trustee Petlicoff.
In fiscal year 2022, we seem to have a rebound, unless there's some error here in no parentheses showing a deficit. How did we go from a negative the year before of $163,000 to a positive if we're still experiencing a 5% enrollment decline?
Well, go ahead.
It looks like they're independent. Really, what you're seeing here is those 3% are $1.5 million in each of those four years. I think each of these years is standing alone. You're not doing a rolling total estimate on any of it, right?
No, what it is, is that 5% is a new starting point for 2019.
For each year?
For each year.
Yeah.
We have... Right now, we're predicated on 20, 21, and 22. When I did the... When I did the sustainable budget, is that we're gonna have a 2% drop for this particular year. That carries over as the starting point then at 2020 says,